All right, I am going to open the ZBA meeting for July 9th, 2019. Ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Did they move the flag? Can I do that one?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Our applicants are here for a special permit. I'm going to take things out of order because they had stated that an engineer is on their way, so I am going to entertain a motion to approve the minutes for May 29th, 2019.
Really?
Oh, May 28th, I'm sorry, 2019. Do I have a motion?
Yes, you have a motion to approve the minutes.
Tim, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yep.
All in favor?
Yep.
Aye.
All right. Bang, 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 bang. Welcome, Charlie.
Oh, you, sir.
Not bad, thank you. All right, so I will open the public hearing at 6:03. We have before us a request for a special permit for 11 Marshview Road located in the Village Floodplain District. According to our zoning bylaws, Section 6, Chapter C1, "Pre-existing non-conforming structures or use may be extended, altered, or changed provided the Board of Appeals grants a special permit and makes a finding that such extension, alteration, or change shall not substantially more detrimental to the general public or butters than the existing non-conforming use." First of all, do you have your proof of a butter mailing?
Is it the one that proves that it was sent out or the receipts that we got back?
The receipts.
So the receipts from?
Both, both, actually.
So these are what came back and this is what we sent?
Yeah.
Right, right, right.
The state sent theirs back.
All right.
Every time you deal with the state, it's different.
So the board was forwarded your application, but for speed of discussion, if you could just explain what you're planning to do for the board?
Yeah, so we are trying to bring up to code the pre-existing non-conforming structure that we have on the property and build a small cabin, three-season cabin, for us to be able to enjoy the property.
And what's there currently?
What's on the property now?
Correct.
It's a structure that has town water, power, and I don't know the exact measurements of the existing one right now.
Eight by 10.
It's eight by 10, so there's toilet, sink, power, refrigerator, and we're looking to expand on that.
And do you have any plans for that, or?
We do. I believe they were, hopefully they were submitted.
I did not get anything for that.
Twenty by thirty, it's a twenty by thirty structure.
That's what you want to replace?
Yes. Oh, no, no, that's what we want, built.
Yep. And currently, the structure is?
I believe eight by 10.
Have you approached Conservation?
We have, and there was some discussion on contacting the DEP, and that basically, DEP sent us back to saying that we just need to apply to the ZBA as it was a local matter and not a state matter.
So you do not have an order of conditions for the property?
I'm not sure, to be honest. I don't think so.
They haven't gone through anything?
If that would come from the state, the answer is no.
That would come from the ZBA? I mean, from the Conservation? You would meet with them and they would basically lay out what you would have to do for that property?
No, we do not have that.
So I think we might have put the cart before the horse like Mr. Thomo described, but we were under a time crunch to get this.
Well, the only thing we could think of is to postpone it for a few days or whatever. The guy shows up maybe with the plans.
I don't think that's gonna do it. You ever see a Conservation Commission make a finding within two days?
Well, our meeting is next Tuesday.
Do they have an application before you?
No.
And that takes a while. Do you request that it's submitted in advance, or a certain number of days in advance so you can review?
We have to go to some sec.
So what do you guys want to do?
I'd like to see the engineer first. Maybe give him a couple of minutes more, because...
Wait.
I think we can cover that.
All right.
Yeah, do you want to step out?
Definitely. We recess.
He just called and said that he was...
So we're gonna recess at 6:07 and reconvene when he arrives. And obviously, we don't want to discuss the matter, correct?
It's a nice layout for a camp. It was the, you put a bigger camper on there, too.
The pads all in.
Pardon? That could be, that could be.
My apologies.
Yeah, put him in the middle.
Oh, no, I'll put him next to you. I'm scared of you.
Justifiably. And your name, sir?
Keith Titula, T.Y.
K.E.I.
K.E.I.T.H. T.Y.T.U., L.A.
T.Y.T.U.
L.A. Yep, from Minuteman Engineering.
Thanks for here. Thank you, sir.
All right, reopen the meeting, reconvene, 6:08. We are joined by Keith Titula from Minuteman Engineering. The question was, so my question, I guess, first and foremost, were you the individual that was emailing back and forth in regards to the permit for the ZBA?
Yes.
On behalf of the applicants?
Yes.
We had discussed the fact that there was no application to Conservation?
We submitted a, an RDA, a request for determination of applicability. The date that we submitted that was, I'm sorry.
Need a plan with the RDA.
Yep, we submitted a plan.
This is what the problem is. See the mailbox over there?
We didn't submit it at the mail, but we submitted it at the meeting. We went to, we went to the meeting, submitted it. And that was at the ConCon meeting on June, April 16th, 2019.
Kenny, what have you done with that? Nothing? Nothing's been addressed?
No, because we didn't have a request for determination to send a copy to the DEMA because we wanted to get a plan. They told us to have a septic, the Board of Health go for the plan. So I don't know if they submitted a request to the Board of Health for a plan. Mike says no.
That, no, that would, that would be premature to do a perk test and, because in order to submit for the notice of intent, we would have to have a construction plan, you know, aside to the foundation, location of the foundation, the location of the septic system. And obviously, we premature to do that until we get the ZBA's conditions because we don't know, in case we get, if we, if we do get this permit, this special permit tonight, we don't know where the building's going. You could say, we don't want it 70 feet back, you know, we don't want 80 feet back, we want it 40 feet back, and so forth. So, so it would be premature to, to submit a septic plan or a notice of intent. But we did submit the request for determination of applicability, but we know that we're going to have to file a notice of intent anyway just because of the location of the bordering vegetative wetlands in the proximity of the river.
Do you have an elevation of the floodplain?
Do I have one with me? No.
I mean, did you do that already?
No, because it'd be premature. We know, we know we're in the flood, we know we're in the floodplain.
I know that, but it's just an elevation as to what you have to deal with to come up out of the ground if you get the permit.
Right.
How many feet? And if it's gonna be a human, for human habitation, it has to be two feet above the top of the floodplain?
Right, right, right. We're gonna be, you know, it's gonna conform to the master's building code with respect to building in a floodplain, as far as having the mechanicals above the floodplain, having the first floor above the floodplain, having a stilt, a pier, foundation.
So I withdraw my previous statement that we put in the cart before the horse. He is correct that he needs to know what our desire is gonna be before he can lay that out. How do you guys want to move forward?
Doesn't Brookfield have a bylaw about building a house in a floodplain that requires a septic system?
Well, the septic system would have to be approved by the Board of Health first. The conditions would have to be approved by Conservation. They have a lot of hurdles to jump.
I thought the bylaw said no, period, that there weren't any hurdles to jump. This has no.
If I, if I, I believe that's for new construction, and this is alternating, this is alternating a pre-existing.
Pre-existing, which is...
That's not a pre-existing house.
There's no...
You're building a new house, but that's not a pre-existing house.
Under, under Chapter 40, because we're using a substantial, a substantial portion of the existing footprint, it's considered an alteration of that building.
Do you have a Title V inspection on this? So then the question?
No.
Kenny, so the question is, if you're worried about placement, which is not on that plan?
Right.
Why isn't the pre-existing foundation on that plan? Or pre-existing structure? Because you'd have to stay within those limits.
The pre-existing structure is on that.
That's the box?
Yeah. Here, if, 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 if you don't mind, let me, let me get everybody out. This is the, what you're looking at there is existing conditions, so there's existing, this is the proposed.
Existing campus, what?
Here's a proposed.
What's the size of it?
Existing, this is what we got.
So we confirm we might have pulled this, this is a ball.
We submitted the...
Proposal.
RDA, yes, yeah.
So the town clerk has it. We don't have it. What we got?
Oh, yeah, yeah, the town clerk has it. Yeah, right. It was part of our application package.
Because either the ZBA or Conservation, I'm set.
I know it sounds a little...
But that's not a house, just because it could have been an outhouse.
Was this gonna make the...
And this is a house. Obviously, it wasn't anything to do with the house because when they bought a property in 2007, they would have had that of a Title V septic system.
You can.
This is a new...
But the writing goes one way.
There's no relationship between those two. So it's like against the Brooklyn bylaws. What's there to talk about?
So Kenny, are you with Tim? So I read off the bylaw, it's not the one that Tim's talking about, but Section 6, the one that we're dealing with, the one that's on the application, the one that's applicable, Section 6, Section C1, "Pre-existing non-conforming structure," which that eight by 10 structure is, "or use may be extended, altered, or changed." That really doesn't fall into that.
If it doesn't violate another Brookfield bylaw?
Well, that's not even the issue. You're not extending that, you're just, you're completely leveling it and putting a new structure.
Were you, we're not usually utilizing the structure, but we're utilizing the footprint. And I think if you, if you look at, if you look at...
Way too big a stretch.
I think that's a far stretch.
What, you wanna, you wanna look at Diedrich versus ZBA, Town of Wayland, and that's, that's the precedent that we're going by.
I'm gonna recommend that we refer this to Town Council and reconvene once, once we've gotten their opinion.
Good.
So can I entertain a motion to refer to Town Council and reschedule?
Second.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Ken?
It would have been a little different if we had this.
Do I have a second?
Second.
You made the motion, Ken. Do I have a second? Anybody?
Second.
Thank you, Tim. And reconvene, do we want to pick a date now? I want to pick a date now, so we don't have to repost it.
Steve?
Yes, sir.
Somebody got a question?
Yes, sir.
Do butters get notified if this company...
Any butters that are presently here, there's notification here and it will be posted by law on our website, but you'll know today, ma'am.
Well, I should put my stuff on my calendar.
I'm assuming they'll have an opinion in a week. Do we want to do July 16th?
What day is that?
Tuesday, a week from today.
I won't be up here.
What about you? He's saying, no, you can't.
Right.
We meet on the third Tuesday in a month, so...
I can't do the 15th.
Conservation, next Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Do you want the meeting?
Well, we'll have to share the room or go, you know, into the...
Well, we can, we can go somewhere else.
We can go to the police station.
He's got a Conservation meeting, then, is what...
Charlie, when can you show?
I can be, I'm available after that, anytime that, that week, 17th, 18th, 19th.
Are you guys opposed to Wednesday, July 17th?
Not a problem.
Is there any other meeting scheduled for that, sir?
I'm gonna say Wednesday, July 17th. I will look it up. If it is, I will request the police station.
Yeah.
But it will be posted on the website, but as it stands now, the motion is to refer to Town Council and reconvene Wednesday, July 17th at 6:00 PM here. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
See you next week.
Do you hold on to those receipts now, or should I?
I'm gonna keep them, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks. All right, so entertain a motion to adjourn, well, I'm gonna close the public hearing and entertain a motion to adjourn at 6:18.
Yeah.
Motion, adjourn at 6:18.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second to adjourn?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Should I steal that one, sir?
Yes, I'm just looking.
It's a science.
And this is not the same thing, I don't think.
This is all you need because it's got the...
Yeah, if we had it, I already got that. A little bit different.
No, Kenny has it.
We're good.